Our Father, we thank you for this special time in the life of our town. Where we come together, we discuss the business, the direction and the vision. Father, thank you so much for our leadership, those elected officials and those public servants that serve our town so very well. We ask the Lord that you give them protection, give them discernment and give them wisdom. Father, I thank you for the citizens that show interest in our town. Lord, we pray that it was the best town possible. So we pray for your leadership, we pray that we'll follow it, we pray for all the citizens in our town, and I ask that you bless Cherryville. I ask this in Jesus's name, amen. Thank you, Mayor, City Council.
Join me in the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. The first item we have to address is approval of our agenda as presented tonight. What is the pleasure of the council on the agenda approval?
Make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
I have a motion in a second to approve the agenda as presented. I would ask all in favor of this motion to do so by saying aye. All those opposed the same, and there is none, it is unanimous. Next item is approval of the minutes of our city council regular meeting of July the eighth, two thousand twenty-four. What is the pleasure of the council on approval of the minutes?
I make a motion that we approve the city council regular meeting session on July the eighth.
Second.
Okay, I have the motion in a second to approve the amendments of the city council regular meeting of July the eighth, two thousand twenty-four. All in favor of this motion, please say aye. All opposed the same, and there is none. Next item on our agenda is the mayor's comments, and I would like to begin by saying how exceedingly thankful I am for the hundreds of texts, posts, phone calls, cards, and most importantly, the prayers that were said on my behalf during my recent illness and extended hospital stay. There are not enough words to express the outpouring of support that I have received from citizens, family, friends, the adjacent communities, and from people all over our great state and even beyond. I have been so humbled by this concern, and truly it has been a great benefit in the steps of my improvement toward recovery. I love this city, all its citizens, and as well as our extended communities. There are none above these, and I will always cherish their love. Thanks to all, and a special thanks to our mayor pro tem Jill Hewitt for covering for all the mayoral duties during my absence. Work is continuing daily on the gym, and the roof is now finished. Inside work is now beginning and should move swiftly. We still have some construction to do on the sewer system, and then we will begin on the parking area as well as the playground area. We are hoping for completion within the next couple months. The much anticipating opening of the cherry pit will be August the twentieth with the official ribbon cutting. Please go by and visit this establishment and view the awesome patio area with its two fire pits. Councilman Gary Freeman painted the old barn doors that hang on the inside wall, and we wish good luck to Brady and Mason on this new adventure that they have ahead of them. The future apartment complex on Academy Street sent the city an email several weeks ago and stated they will do, that they do still plan on starting development in September of this year. The city has all the materials ready to get the electrical service in place for this construction. Calico Creek off of Brickway Road materials are here also, and Southeastern is in the process of bidding out this project to get the electrical system ready. Dollar Tree has begun preparing for building on the land between Ferguson Ace Hardware and the old Chevrolet dealership. The city has plans to update Men Black Park on Randbar Street. We have received a quote for two pickleball courts and improvements to the basketball court. This should begin sometime in late September. These monies will come from the CDG grant that was from Piedmont Lithium. In closing, I wish to state that Councilwoman Janice Hovis, Lisa Millwood, Finance Director Dixie Wall, and City Manager Brian Dalton attended the Electric Cities Conference in Asheville on Tuesday through Thursday of this week and returned back early today for tonight's council meeting. And this concludes the mayor's comments. We'll move on to item seven, and that is special recognition of the city employees through years of service. And at this time, I would like to ask Larry Wright, and if he has any family or friends that want to come forward with him, is Larry here? Oh, yeah. He's trying to hide though.
That's right. Can't do it.
Larry's been here a few years, and I want to read this certificate. This certificate is awarded to Larry Wright in recognition of thirty years, that's three of thirty years of service to the city of Cherryville. It's signed by City Manager Brian Dalton and Mayor H.L. Bean. Congratulations.
He said I didn't think. City's been, thank you, we got a good boss, good city council and mayor, thank you.
Goes by in a flash. Okay, we'll move to item eight, and this is special recognition of the Cherryville High School Power Players. Charlevole High School Athletic Director Matt Powers is here, and Piedmont Lithium Community Relations Manager Emily Winters is here. If y'all two would take the floor now, you have, I have no idea who's going to get these awards.
Good evening, guys, thank you for hosting us. So I'm the new athletic director at Charlevole High School as of July first. Most of you know me, I've been around for a long time. So Emily and I, we talked about this, they've been doing the Power Player now for a year at Charlevole High School. Brian and I spoke recently too about, we wanted to reengage with our city council and with our city about our athletics at Charlevole High School and what goes on at Charlevole High School, and be able to communicate that with you guys and recognize some of our students at your meetings. So Emily, I'll let her explain kind of what Power Player, what Power Player is, and then I'll recognize the two students, what they are, or who they are.
Yeah, so Piedmont Lithium, we love to support Charlevole High School and then also John Chavis Middle School, and so we came up with this idea with both the Booster Clubs to do sort of an athlete of the month, and a spin on that is the Piedmont Power Players. So the two students being recognized tonight are the athlete of the month for the summer workouts that they've been doing all summer long at the high school.
So the first athlete that we want to recognize is Jordan Lorenz. Jordan, if you'll step up here. Jordan Lorenz is a senior at Charlevole High School. He is a football player and basketball player. He has attended all of the summer workouts and didn't miss one. He didn't miss one. He's an all-conference football player, great role model in the building, and his coaches' comments for Jordan said, Jordan has taken on the role of not only our team leader on the field, but also off the field. Jordan is a positive influence on the students at Charlevole High School and makes a positive impact on them every day in every way possible at Cherryville High School. Our, our next athlete comes from our cheerleading team, you can stand up there, Jordan.
Congratulations. Congratulations, Jordan.
You can stay up there, Jordan. Stay right there, Jordan. Our next athlete. Our next athlete comes, Jordan, stay right up there, we'll take a picture. Is from our cheerleading team, and that is Ms. Chloe Strapp. Chloe is a cheerleader, which if you guys know, part of the state championship cheerleading team. She was also selected the all-region and all-state team, she represented Charlevole High School this summer in Greensboro as a part of that all-state team. She is a flyer and an outfielder for our softball team. She is, got several awards academically as well as her recognition on the cheerleading. Her coach said about her that Chloe is a leader and will always work hard for what she does. She is a versatile team member that can fly, base, and tumble. She recently, this summer, went through a choreography where they had a two-day choreography camp, and she learned the routine very quickly and helped with the changes and moved with the changes that were given to her. Chloe hopes to continue cheerleading when she gets to college. This is Chloe Strapp.[998.66][998.69](applause) So again, we really want to make sure that we continue this relationship, obviously, with Piedmont, and we're excited about the opportunity we do to work with the city, and of course, our facilities, the city, they've been great help us, obviously, this summer and throughout. I do have a couple of gifts for you, we print these every year, I don't know how far they get out, but this has all the social media on it, accounts, so you can keep up with our schedules, and it has all of our fall schedules. We'll also do this for the winter and the spring, so I have one for each of you, and for you, Brian, to put up at the city and for your offices, and if there's anything at the high school that we can do to continue our relationship with you guys, we want to continue to grow that. Thank you for having us, and thank you for hosting us, and like Emily said, we'll do this once a month. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
I got something in my truck, so.
Thank you, Matt, thank you, Emily, for being here tonight. We'll move on to item nine, and that's citizens to be heard. Any citizen that would like to speak may do so by coming to the podium, stating your name and address, and remember, comments will be strictly held to three minutes. So at this time, I only have one that has signed up to be heard tonight, and that's Mr. Ned Yates, so if you will come to the podium.
Good evening, Mayor, city council members, city manager, city staff. My name's Ned Yates from American Legion Post one hundred, two fifteen North Pink Street, Cherryville, North Carolina. I served there as the athletic officer, not the director, those are people that work in public schools, so I'm military, we're athletic officers. Every job there is an officer, finance officer, or whatever officer, beg you for money officer. Anyway, our alliance is also with the Cherryville Auxiliary Unit one hundred and the Sons of the American Legion Squadron one hundred, and we host those at our building at two fifteen North Pink Street. Recently, during the dates of July eighteenth through the twenty-fourth, our post hosted the twenty twenty-four North Carolina American Legion Senior Baseball State Tournament Championship at Fraley Field. While our senior team did not win that championship this season, they did compete in it as the host team, and they, along with our junior legion team, competed at a very high level in twenty twenty-four, with our junior team going through their regular season with only one loss. Now, I'm here tonight to thank the city of Cherryville officially as the athletic officer for the tremendous amount of support that we have received during the past few months leading up to and during the state tournament. The weather decided not to be our friend on a couple of occasions during the tournament, usually late at night, most specifically when you're standing there for the national anthem, getting ready to let your hometown kid that just did a real good job at the World Series for University of North Carolina, right in the middle of the national anthem, and it didn't just start raining, it, it really started raining. We had a lot of those that happened overnight, which left our field, left Fraley Field flooded, not only on the infield, but on the outfield, and it, it took a lot of hard work from our coaches and our field crew members, but I also want you to know as council members, without calling any names to embarrass people, there were at least, I know of two, probably more, city employees who before their work at seven A.M., were out there in work clothes at five thirty and six o'clock in the morning with a leaf blower on their back, helping direct that water toward the drains, trying to make sure that the field was playable for the games, you have multiple games every day. So we appreciate that additional, that they just donated that time. Neither of these persons I can think of off the top of my head are members of the Legion, they just came out to help, so you should be proud of that, I hope. Hey, I wrote it down so I could try to be brief, Mayor. This, I have a reputation. Additionally, I would like to thank publicly the Chamber of Commerce, who put time into creating an area on their website, so when people went and searched for the city of Cherryville, there would be a specific section there just for the tournament. Also, Ms. Tackett, whose creative skills on Canva far exceed mine, created some very nice content to put up that we could share on our Facebook page, and of course, they helped us with the concert that was held on Thursday night, along with helping coordinate stuff during the fire truck parade, for the parade of teams, for the eight teams on Friday afternoon prior to the welcome banquet. We received many, many compliments from parents from out-of-town teams, and, and also from our local fans who come to our games all the time, and they were especially excited about how the tournament went in spite of all our obstacles, and we had lots and lots of turnout, which is great because our theme this year was fans in the stands. Prior to those immediate months leading up to the tournament, the city has been a strong advocate and an ally for Post one hundred, as we were, have worked to secure the state tournament bid not only for twenty-four, but for twenty twenty-five. And since the fall of twenty twenty-three, multiple improvements have been made to Fraley Field, such as a new digital scoreboard, a padded outfield wall to replace chain-link fencing, a new hire fence down the first baseline, which adds more protection for those in the handicapped seating area and fans sitting in the right field bleachers. There's also a new double batting cage to make tournaments like this go faster, two teams can hit it at the same time, and there are new fencing around the bullpen areas. These are just the beginning of what we hope are many updates that will continue to happen at Fraley Field that will continue to set it apart from all the other Legion fields and high school fields in this area. These improvements not only help our two baseball teams, but also the junior varsity and the varsity teams at Charlevole High School. None of this would be possible without a lot of hard work and many hours of planning from a lot of different people, in addition to the guidance and support of many of the city leaders and many, many of the financial supporters who have bought in to this vision. Many, if not most, of those financial sponsors are local family-owned Cherryville businesses. So I'm just here to, I would also bring up the name of Jerry Hudson, a fellow colleague of yours back in the day, a former city council member who was a member of our post. Jerry was a Vietnam combat veteran, and we lost Jerry on the, during the second game, which was, you know, that, that, that was a big shot in the gut. This was not just Jerry, this was Jerry's vision, but a lot of people jumped in and were able to pull this off, like having a concert. You know, you don't always know, you do something like, why would they have a concert? Well, they wanted it to be, you know, big, everybody could, and I will just remember that on that night, it was pouring down rain in Lincoln, and our Facebook page was lighting up with, how can y'all have a concert, it's pouring down rain here. It's pouring down rain in Shelby, it's pouring down rain in Bessemer City. It was not raining in Cherryville, that whole concrete area was full of folding chairs, the people had a great time listening to a band that a lot of people wanted to come here. So I know, I, I think I'm safe in saying that Jerry would be proud of what happened, the fans in the stands, he would be very appreciative of all the hard work that many of you did. A lot of you think you just did a little bit, but when you're doing something like that, if you only got one job to do, if you did that one job, then that's something that somebody else that's doing four jobs didn't have to do. So whatever you volunteer as, if you say, well, I only do this, well, that's, somebody else ain't having to do five things now, they're only having to do four. So thank you all again for the support that you gave us, and we look forward to a successful twenty twenty-five state tournament. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
I think that was only last two minutes.
Two, three minutes.
That was for a term of honor stop.
You have time to thank for that.
We're not going to hold you to that for even. Great, that was great, thank you. Okay, we'll move on to item ten, and this is where we have a public hearing regarding the rezoning change from GMC, General Manufacturing, to RML, which is residential multi-family zoning at five oh one North Mountain Street, Gaston County G.I.S. number one two eight eight seven nine. And we have our planning zoning director, Richard Eland, here, but I would entertain a motion from council to enter into public hearing at this time.
Make a motion for a public hearing.
I have a motion in two seconds to enter public hearing, all in favor, please say aye. All opposed, there is none. Okay, Richard, you have the floor.
Yes, sir, good evening. I'll get through the chain of events for the record for everyone. July the first, twenty twenty-four, Mr. Cody Warren, who's this gentleman here, if you have any questions later. He, he's representing the property owner, and he applied for rezoning at five oh one North Mountain Street. July the fifteenth, the planning board made and recommended the zoning request from General Manufacturing to the residential multi-family. July the thirty-first, the property was posted, and letters of the legal notice of public hearing were mailed to the applicant and the surrounding property owners of tonight's public hearing, and city hall was also posted. August the second, and August the ninth, the legal notice of public hearing was published in the Eagle through the Lincoln Time News. And tonight's the public hearing for the requests at five oh one North Mountain from GMC to RML. Now, y'all have pages eight through, is it?
Nineteen.
Okay, I'll go through those pages one at a time real quickly. The first one is the email per zoning ordinance after a planning board meeting and a recommendation like this, I have to let the city council know, so I did so through email. And again, the planning board, all seven members present unanimously voted to approve the rezoning tonight. Page nine and ten is the application for rezoning request that went through the planning board. It shows the owners being Mr. Paul Nathan Martin. And again, Mr. Cory Warren here, he was at that meeting and answered the questions of the planning board. Page eleven is, comes from the G.I.S. in Gaston County, it's just showing that Mr. Martin is the property owner of, of that, and at the bottom, it's showing the, in mostly white, it's the parcel on the left side on two seventy-four north, which is Mountain Street. And it's approximately five point nine five acres. Next page shows the adjacent property owners surrounding that parcel. And page thirteen shows their names again with all their addresses. These are the individuals that received the legal notice of public hearing. And just to let you know, I did not receive any phone calls, emails of any kind, anybody objecting or, you know, going along with it. Page fourteen is the legal notice that appeared in the paper, and that was also mailed to the property owners. And page fifteen's the good part, it's showing the future land use map, I circled it in. That's showing the future land use map. I circled it and showing that this parcel years ago was already approved for, you know, residential. So that's a good thing. Y'all won't have to discuss anything against it. It's already with our map. Page sixteen again, number C nineteen point one, point two C. I'll just read it. Except for rezoning involving a conditional use permit or special use permit, neither the planning board nor the city council shall evaluate a rezoning petition based on any specific proposal for the use or development of the property. Page seventeen again is a, that is what the planning board went through, A, B, C, D, and E. And A, the recommendation to city council was to grant the rezoning as requested. And page eighteen is the same. Items that the city council will have to consider tonight. And lastly, page nineteen is the statement of consistency. This is what the mayor and city council will have to vote on items one and two. And that's to be unanimous on one and two in order for the, the, uh, rezoning to take place. And that's my presentation. Do you have any questions of me or Mr. Warren?
I have a question, ma'am.
Yes.
On page, on page, um, eleven, the, the little picture there in the corner, that's the old office, the O'Neil Office building.
Right, the Gaston County takes that picture.
Okay, but that's not the total.
No, that's not the total.
Okay, that's, I just want to make sure. That's just the office building.
Yeah, just give someone a location to go to if they was hunting the building.
That answers my question. Thank you.
Right, it's.
Thank you.
Any other questions for planning and zoning director Eland?
I have one question, Mayor. Uh, I was looking here on page nine. Is Mr. Martin, is he here tonight? Okay. All right, I was just wanting to make sure because I saw the applicant name is Paul Martin. I just wanted to make sure the applicant was here. I know we had Mr. Warren here representing. I just wanted to make sure the property.
I'm sorry, I didn't, I'd never met him.
All right, at this time, I would entertain that, is there any citizen that would like to speak concerning the rezoning? If not, then do I have a motion from council to exit public hearing?
Second.
I have a motion in a second to exit public hearing. All in favor of this motion, please say aye. We are exited from public hearing. So now it's open for discussion by council. And, uh, we can do the statement of consistency after there's any other discussion before that. Is there any other discussion before we go to the statement of consistency? Okay, and we do have to remember that each one of these must be voted on separately and it must be unanimous.
No, yeah, that's correct.
Okay. The Cherryville City Council held a public hearing on August the fifteenth to consider rezoning parcel number one two eight eight seven nine. And after the public hearing and discussion of the rezoning, the council has the following conclusions. One, it is the council's conclusion that the proposed rezoning is or is not consistent with the city of Cherryville land use plan adopted on August twenty twelve. Yes. Councilman Hovis? Yes. It is unanimous. There are all is. Number two, the council finds the proposed rezoning is or is not reasonable and is or is not in the public interest.
Is.
So we have unanimous is on all of those, okay? And that is ordered this fifteenth day of August, two thousand twenty-four. Okay?
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Now, do we need another motion to vote to accept the changes?
To rezon.
I would need a motion from council to accept the, from changing from a general manufacturing to, uh, residential cluster.
Second.
Motion in second. All in favor of this motion, please say aye. All opposed, the same. There is none.
I just want to, if I may, Mayor, I just want to correct. You said residential cluster, but it's actually residential man, multi, multifamily. I'm sorry.
Okay, yeah. Everybody get that one. You want us to vote again?
Yes, Mayor.
So I need that motion.
And if you'll say rezoning.
I make a motion to approve the rezoning change from GMC to RMF for Gaston County GIS number one two eight eight seven nine.
Okay, you have a motion in second. All in favor of this motion, please say aye. All opposed, there is none. That's good. We'll move on to item eleven now, is consideration of carryover budget amendments. And that's going to be page twenty through twenty-eight. Is Finance Director there?
She is, but I can go over them if you want to real quick. These are pretty much just house cleaning like we do every year. The first one on page twenty, that is the downtown bond, uh, for having those funds carried over from last budget year to this budget year. Uh, the next one on page twenty-one, that is the grant that we received from Senator Alexander that we're managing through Cleveland County. And you can see there each individual organization that receives funds. And we, obviously, some of them have not spent the funds yet, so it has to be carried over to this budget year. Page twenty-two is, this is some, some specific grants that we've, and donations we've received over, uh, the past budget year that'll be carried over. And you can see the list there. Uh, the biggest one is obviously the recreation donation, and that is part of the community development agreement that we had with Piedmont Lithium. So that's the two hundred and one thousand of the two hundred and ninety-one that we will also need to carry over into this budget year. And page twenty-three is the cherry tree pro, project that we just received, the fifty thousand that we just received to do the cherry tree project.
Matalbres?
Yes, sir. And the next one is the interlocal agreement that we have with Gaston County to complete the GM. And we've spent, you can see there, around five hundred thousand of it. We still have the one million fifty-seven thousand that will be carried into this budget year. And the next one is the HUD grant that we are still in the process of working on. And I think we're hopefully getting to the end. It's been approved. We've got the approval letter, and now we're trying to get logged on to another federal system where I believe we can draw the funds down. And obviously, that'll be carried over because, uh, we've not received any of those funds yet. And the next one is primarily your, uh, Calico Creek and some of those type things, some of the electrical that we're going to have to spend out there to get that in. And, uh, the water professional service at the bottom, that is, or at the top too, that is the AIA grant. We've not started on that one yet, submitting a request, so that's going to be carried over. And you can see we spent roughly a hundred and three thousand of the wastewater on the AIA grant that'll have to also be carried over into this budget year.
Can I say, what is the AIA?
The AIA grant, that is a, it's a three hundred thousand dollar grant where they're doing a study on our water, uh, infrastructure and our wastewater infrastructure to see where our problems are and what we need to focus on.
Thank you, okay.
When we did the smoke test.
Yes, that was some of the smoke testing.
All right.
Uh, the next one is, uh, the police department's asset, federal asset forfeiture. And that's what they have in their account at this time, and that needs to be carried over to this budget year as well. And the last one is the, the grant we have with Cleveland County Water, the three million dollar grant with them. That project has started and they just submitted their first request for reimbursement this week to DEQ. And if you remember, what happened is those requests get submitted to DEQ. They come to the city of Cherryville, and then we then turn around and release it to Cleveland County Water to pay for the project. Uh, the other is the one million, six hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant that we have with, uh, DEQ. And we are probably, hopefully, within a few weeks of finishing our first project uh, at one of our live stations. And then we, uh, Larry has actually already submitted the request, uh, for funding, and we should get that soon as we finish that project.
Okay. That's it.
And that's all.
I have another question.
Yes, ma'am.
On page twenty-one.
Twenty-one.
What is, what is Preserve Gaston Inc.?
That is an, that is an organization in Gast, in Gastonia that receives some of these funds that Senator Alexander had directed towards us. And what we're doing is we're managing the grant. And so what they'll do is, I believe they're going to buy a property with their funds. So what they'll do is they'll purchase a property and then they'll send us the request. And when they show that they purchased, then we'll release those funds to them.
I just, I just had no idea what Preserve Gaston Inc.
I don't really know what they are. I know they're out of Gastonia, but I don't know exactly what they do. It was just some of the, it was just one of the organizations that Senator Alexander had, had established as receiving some of these funds.
Okay, all right.
And you can see there, you know, like, the little theater is up, is one of the big ones.
Ways they can filter the money through someone else.
Oh, yeah. I, I understand that part. I just didn't know what Preserve Gaston.
Yeah, and we're just managing.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, I think that's all the budget amendments that our city manager's gone over. Um, and we can vote on all these at one time.
Yes, Mayor.
Okay, so I would entertain a motion from city council to vote on all the budget amendments as presented.
Second.
I have a motion in second to, uh, accept the budget amendments as presented. All in favor of this motion, please say aye. All opposed, the same, and it is unanimous, okay? We'll move on to item twelve, and this is consideration of a resolution to place city equipment on gov dot deals. And that's page, uh, twenty-nine. We've got several items there.
Mayor, council, what this is, is, uh, if you remember, we had it in the budget this year for the wastewater treatment plant to get a new, uh, lawnmower. So Larry has asked that we place this as surplus, identify these two lawnmowers as surplus property so we can put them on gov deals. And it's a nineteen ninety-nine and a two thousand model SCAG, uh, mower. And you can see the hours and the, and the wear and tear on the mowers in the picture there.
So a lot of hours. Do you think we'll get anybody to buy all that?
Oh, yeah.
Always do something. Somebody will want it, you know?
Absolutely.
Okay, um, I would need a motion from council to place these two items on gov dot deals.
I make a motion to put these two mowers on the.
Yeah, I just need to reclose. Yeah, there you go.
Second.
Restate that, ma'am.
I'll make a motion to surplus these two mowers, place them on gov dot deals.
I have a second. Okay, no other discussion. All in favor of the motion, please say aye. All opposed, the same, there is none. Next item, uh, is not correct. We do other businesses?
Usually we do it before we go on class.
Okay. This time, does any council member have any other business that they would like to present to, uh, council tonight? To our citizens or during council? Okay, we don't have anything from council. What about staff? Staff, any, have any other business?
I'll just say, uh, Mayor, you did mention it in your comments, but, uh, we did just go to the Electric Cities Annual Meeting with Councilwoman Hovis and Finance Director Dixie Wall and, uh, Lisa Millwood. Uh, it was a great meeting. You know, Electric Cities always is very informative. But I would like to say that what I get from that meeting when I go, and I think Councilwoman Hovis probably got the same thing, is, is, is how far we're really ahead of a lot of other towns with the, uh, with our system and the way we're able to, to monitor our system. You know, uh, the AMI system, we were the first town, I believe in the state, that got online and got that system in place. And you can tell that we're, we're receiving a lot of benefits from that that not many towns across the state are receiving. So, and I would just like to say that's, that's a testament to the hard work that Dixie has done over the past probably five years to get us on that system and utilize it.
I would like to echo that also. I was in, uh, several, several meetings up there, but one of the meetings was with elected officials. And I've only been an elected official for nine months, so I was listening a lot to these other mayors and council members. And the A, uh, what, what? AMI, I'll get it right. That was one of the questions that the, uh, that the speaker said, how many cities represented here have the AMI? And, and quite a few of them raised their hands, quite a few. But further discussion revealed that not many of them are utilizing the system the way it's supposed to be utilized. So that is a real testament to Dixie, Dixie and Brian Moat. I just wanted to echo what Brian said.
Very good. And, uh, thank you for leaving early to come back and make the council meeting tonight. Because I know, uh, Percy was, was also part of the conference.
That's a little inside joke here.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, any other business, um, from staff? Okay, if not, we'll go on to item fourteen. And this is consideration to enter into closed session. And this is in reference to North Carolina, uh, General Statute one four three, colon, dot, three one eight, dot, eleven, parentheses, A, parentheses, six. And, uh, this is to consider qualifications, competence, performance, or appointment or conditions of employment of an individual or employee of the city. So at this time, I would entertain a vote to enter into closed session.
Second.
May I have a motion in second to enter into closed session? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, there is none. We'll go to the next room. We will come back and, and state any, any action that was taken in closed session.